You're watching DCTV, Branford's Community Access Station.
This is BCTV, Branford Government Television, a service of Branford Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of the town of Branford.
Okay, welcome. We'll call the Board of Selectmen's, uh, need special meeting to order for July, which should be January 11, 2018. Um, before we begin, I'd just like to acknowledge and extend our condolences to the passing of one of Branford's greats, Mr. George Hearn, Selectman Hearn's father. Uh, he's a man who's contributed a lot to this community, but not only this community, this country. Um, so, you know, Jack, certainly, you know, condolences, and I think we ought to just pay some respect with a moment of silence.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item one, to consider and if appropriate approve a project labor agreement, PLA, for the Walsh Intermediate School renovation and expansion project. Each of Selectmen, we have received a proposed labor agreement, um, between the town of Branford Fusco Corporation and the New Haven Building and Construction Trades Council. Uh, this is for the Walsh Intermediate School project, as you may even know, we're getting ready to go out to bid on that project. Um, it's typical for a project of this size. It's a, uh, we have an appropriation of eighty-eight point two million, uh, project, and to consider a project labor agreement. Uh, this would be an agreement that's in place, um, with all the trade unions, and there's, uh, certain aspects of it. I would invite, we have representatives from, uh, both the Fusco Corporation, who is our construction manager on the job, as well as representatives from the, uh, New Haven Building and Construction Trades Council, who I'd asked to come forward and perhaps just speak a little bit about, um, the benefits of, from Fusco's point of view, uh, with this particular project, uh, why this, you know, we're considering this, and what's in the highlights of what's in this, uh, proposal. Um, if you come forward now, Lynn, I'd table whoever would like to come up. And while, uh, representatives from Fusco and the Trades Council is coming up, you know, we've had some discussions, uh, with this, uh, over this in the building committee. However, this is the responsibility of this board as the contracting board for the town to consider and hopefully, uh, if it's deemed appropriate to vote on this, um, agreement. Uh, Lynn?
Uh, yes, my name is John Fussell. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Robert M. Cheveron Associates. Uh, we represent all the building trades unions in the state of Connecticut.
And my name is Lynn Fusco, and I'm the president of the Fusco Corporation. We are a contractor that's been operating out of New Haven for the last ninety-four years. Sometimes I feel like I'm ninety-four. Um, and we've had a great deal of experience, um, building with PLAs as well. So, would you like to go first, or my esteemed colleague?
Well, why don't you go?
So, I'm speak somewhat, um, not as eloquent as an attorney, but I'll speak somewhat anecdotally what it's like, uh, to run projects. Our projects typically run anywhere between thirty million and a hundred million dollars. We've built a, a large number of schools in our ninety-plus years, um, for universities, for institutions, and obviously for towns and municipalities, just in this size. From my perspective, from my personal and professional experience, one of the number-one advantages of a PLA is the no-strike provision. I would say it's one of its strongest strengths. This year in particular, or the, the segment of time that we're dealing with, it's particularly important to notice the no-strike provision because, and correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, the teamsters, the operating engineers, and the carpenters, uh, will be coming up in that timeframe. So, that's important to note. And I think the labors are close. They're pending. Um, so they'll get, you can get the exact sequence, um, from the unions, but those contracts are coming up all at about the same time. So, obviously, not to be dramatic, but if you had a strike in the middle of the job, or as we begin the job, that would hurt the timing. And construction is all schedule and budget. And once you've blown the schedule, you typically blow the budget. So, it's very important. The no-strike provision is one of the key aspects for us. The other is uninterrupted manpower. Fusco has had experience on jobs that were not PLAs, that were complicated, challenging, and large, where, um, a contractor was not able to get the appropriate amount of manpower to take care of all of the jobs that he had contracted for. So, something in Hartford, for instance, took a longer period of time, or in, uh, New London took a longer period of time, so my job did not get the appropriate number of workers. Many other colleagues and competitors in my position have also suffered the same thing. So, an uninterrupted trough of, of man, and as I like to say, woman-power is, is absolutely key for a job of your size, and we have a very tight sequence for this job. The work must begin this summer, and it must move along very swiftly in order to make the date. So, that's, that's important. The other provision is for the residential businesses. So, the, um, those that are not union now, but live in the town, or reside in the town of Branford, would have the opportunity to work, bid and work on this project, if of course they sign a P, uh, the PLA. Um, there are aspects of it, for instance, sometimes the benefits can get a little confusing, and there will be an opportunity that my esteemed col-, you know, friend here can elaborate on in terms of the 401K plan, so that the workers would not have two different funds from which to draw benefits, uh, for this residential business. If they go back to being non-union, their people would still be able to get access to that money, and that could be in this PLA agreement. So, to a great extent, you can customize it to take care of the town's residents and provide them with an opportunity if they have a business here. So, I think that's important. Not surprisingly, because I'm a woman in construction, and that's a struggle for women to get in construction, the unions have been terrific for women. They've come up with a, a program, what is it called? Pathways?
Building Pathways.
Building Pathways. It creates an opportunity for women who are struggling still with who takes care of the kids, when I'm working, when I'm getting trained, how do I learn about this business? The unions offer women the opportunity to learn, to have an earning potential after this, to learn a skill, and to take care of things like training up in their, you know, operation, where is it, Wallingford, or, and to also take care of childcare and transportation issues and bilingual issues. So, I, I think that's key. To say nothing of the opportunity for Branford residents who come onto the job and learn, you know, with a company, and they learn training, they learn a skill, and then, you know, they may be, as we've talked about before, college graduates, who still don't have a job, for whatever reason, but have college loans, and want an opportunity to learn something so they can make some money. You know, it's not surprising these days that people are college graduates, but they can't get a job. So, this will give them that opportunity. And I'm not the right person to digress on that. I'm, I'm sure that he can elaborate. But again, so for me, it's the no-strike provision at a particularly tenuous time for major unions. It's the uninterrupted manpower. It's the residents of Branford having a special, uh, and, uh, special opportunity with their business. It's women and other people that may be employed that don't have any skill, learning how to get trained, and it costs them nothing, and come into the business.
Yes, um, let me just add a few, few comments to this. I mean, a, a construction project of this size has a lot of moving parts, and in order to get a project done on time and under budget requires coordination. And the project labor agreement, it's kind of, think about it kind of like a large symphony of all these moving parts. The project labor agreement is like the conductor. It allows these parts to, to really be coordinated and work very cooperatively, uh, through the construction manager, uh, that's on the project. We're able to, to take the, the various work rules from various trades and simplify them, right, and make them more unique, that will help the project be more efficient. Um, it's, it's good public policy, so much so that our Connecticut State Legislature in nine, in 2012 passed a project labor, uh, piece of legislation, which is thirty-one dash fifty-six B, which I would encourage you to, to look at if you haven't looked at it. It, contrary to what you may hear from, from, you know, the ABC, uh, side of the, the equation, I mean, project labor agreements are perfectly legal. The statute makes them legal, and it sets out, you know, the, the circumstances under which a project labor agreement can come into place. And this project labor agreement that we've drafted for the project meets all the standards, all of the qualifications of this statute. There was a time when, when the project labor agreements were attacked because money went into a retirement plan that was a defined benefit pension plan for each of the trades. We've modified that to take away that issue, right, so that the money on this project can go into annuity funds where it immediately vests, so that it's not a question where you may have a worker that's working on this project for, you know, the, the length of the project, and then he hasn't been there sufficient amount of time to vest in the pension and loses that money. No, under this, and under all the PLAs that we draft now, it goes into annuity fund with automatic, um, vesting. So, that's not an issue that should be of any concern. Um, I would say that one of the big reasons to do a project labor agreement is because the building trades unions have invested millions of dollars into training facilities. And so, when you get a union contractor, you're getting very highly skilled, highly trained craftsmen, uh, that are very, that's very, very important. You want to have a project that's done and it's done right, right? And if you have highly skilled craftsmen, you're going to have a much greater assurance of that occurring. Um, the, the non-union sector does not have the level of training and the level of schools that, that the union side sector has. And so, to me, I think that's one of the greatest benefits, is making sure that all the skilled trades are highly trained, you know, and skilled, and they have refresher courses that they can go through, through the training schools throughout, uh, the state and all of the, the building trades unions at any time. Uh, so to me, that's one of the biggest benefits of using a PLA. Um, PLAs have been used in this state on school projects, on university projects, on private projects as well. Uh, we did, uh, the, the, the projects at UConn have been done under PLAs. Yale has used PLAs. Uh, United Technologies has used private PLAs. Uh, the Hartford School System has been done under PLAs. Uh, there's hundreds of PLAs that have been done in this, and done successfully. And one of the things that I would say to you is that, that, um, you know, the, again, some of the folks that come in and want to attack the PLA concept, they will cite various studies to you. Uh, Beacon Hill is a favorite study that they liked, that attacks PLAs. And, and I would just say to you this, and I'm sure all of you have been around long enough to know, that, um, you know, tell me who paid for the study, and I'll tell you what that study says. People can craft studies to attack PLAs. People can craft studies to promote PLAs. I would advise you, don't look at the studies. Don't look at the stuff online. Go talk to the people that have actually had the benefit of having a project done with a PLA, and ask them what their experience is. And I think that you'll find that they'll all agree that the PLA has been a wonderful experience, and it's been a successful experience for them. Um, so bottom line, I just think it's good public policy. I would encourage you to look at the state statute that governs PLAs. The PLA agreement that we have drafted for you satisfies all of the conditions of that statute.
Did you want to add something about the military, for the veterans?
Uh, one, I, I, one of the guys that, that can talk more succinctly about that. Chris?
So, with the fourteen different building trades, my name is Chris Cozy, uh, president of the New Haven Building Trades. And, uh, with the fourteen different building trades, like John had alluded to, we all have our specific training programs that we train in our craft. Every program has a six thousand to eight thousand hour apprenticeship program. So, when somebody comes into the building trades apprenticeship programs, they're enrolled in a four-year program. They earn while they learn. It costs them nothing. Um, when there are veterans available out there, they qualify for what's called their helmets, the hat, hard hats program, which is a direct entry, because our programs are governed by the Department of Labor, and it has to be nondiscriminatory, except in the case of veterans. In the case of the veterans, if they apply for the program and they meet the qualifications, they get direct entry right into the program. Um, when non-union jobs occur, and they talk about jobs for Branford residents, the jobs, or if they talk about jobs for town residents, a lot of times those jobs are medial jobs. They're sweeping the floor. They're doing some cleaning. They're not getting training. They have a job for a period of time which ends at the end of that project. With the building trades, when you're accepted into one of our organizations, and you get involved in apprenticeship, you start off in a place, and then you go to the next job, but over a four-year period, you're getting a whole host of still, skills that get you into a career. And one of the things I'm hopeful for, um, should all this move forward, is that we can do a career fair, um, in your school for the high school students, um, to educate not only the high school students, but the counselors, about the opportunities in the building trades. And as Lynn had alluded to, also, there are a lot of people that are young adults, uh, that have finished college and have a ton of student loans that can't get jobs that are underemployed at this point in time, that don't have jobs with healthcare and pensions. You know, if we can incorporate something, we always do something with the high school, but I think if we can incorporate something, if there are an unemployed group in, in the area, to, to bring them in and educate them about what the building trades unions are, what the opportunities are, and hopefully create opportunities for them to work on this project.
You know, I'd just like to say, you know, I've been involved in this project from the, in the beginning, and the superintendents here as well. Uh, you know, certainly aware of the schedule, the tight schedule that Fusco and Lynn had, uh, talked about, and there's a lot of critical path items that are involved. And there's also different flows. I mean, during the summer, we talk about ramping up, uh, the workforce and, uh, the, the, not the people on, onsite to get the work done while the students aren't there. This is a, a phased project. It's an occupied school project. It's also the largest project that the town has undertaken. So, I, I think, you know, that, what I'm concerned, or one of the things that I see the benefit of is the uninterrupted manpower with the no-strike, the work stoppage clause, as well as something you touched on was the, um, available skilled, uh, workforce. Um, you know, you, we're going to need, uh, at certain times, depending on when that hits, and listen, there's no guarantee on, uh, any project. I, I recognize that schedules may slip. There's things that need to be, uh, adjusted for. However, I think Branford has, uh, whether it's, um, preparing our budget, um, uh, how we handle some of our, um, liabilities, future obligations, or even these projects. It's about, uh, we try to mitigate the risk. And I think, you know, those, those work stop strikes, um, not enough skilled workforce to bring, brought in on a, in a, uh, rapid fashion when needed. I, I think those are, are potential risks that, now at Branford, but any, any project of this size faces. So, I do see this as an opportunity to kind of, again, there's no guarantees, but I think the town of Branford has a history of trying to mitigate risk. Um, and that's what I see with this PLA, and I know that the superintendent and I have talked about this, and, you know, there, there's programmatic obligations that he has, uh, by having this, you know, that need to continue throughout the school year that while this project is happening. So, in, uh, you know, when we talk about, um, the hitting, hitting key, key dates and the schedules, you know, those, if those slide, that impacts, uh, the, the school programs. And, uh, that, that has a cascading effect, and certainly, if, uh, you know, we've talked about it, and I know that's a concern of both of ours, as many as a parent and, uh, the superintendent as the leader of our school system. So, I don't know if there's anyone else who has anything else, or any questions, or?
I got a couple of questions. Lynn, you mentioned, um, town, town business. So, let's say I own a small plumbing business, five people. I would come, approach you, sign the agreement, potentially. Does that mean that I work with a group of plumbers? How does that work? I mean, obviously, you're going to hire, you're going to go out to bid with plumbing, for instance, right? But if they wanted to train, if, if a local business wanted to bring their people in to train, is that possible through this agreement?
When you say they want to train their current employ-, or us to train their current employees, I'm not sure, there's a key mandatory vision which allows them to bring twenty-five percent of their workforce.
Okay.
And then they would take the rest of that workforce
From the bench.
From, from the union hall.
Okay.
So, they would just call up, and, and, and it's always the employer's responsibility to determine competency. So, if they didn't think someone was competent, it wasn't working out.
Send them back.
They send them back, and they get somebody else.
Okay.
And the other thing is, they don't have to be a union contractor in order to bid to get on the project.
Yeah, I guess that's what I was kind of asking.
Right.
That's a key opportunity for the town.
Okay.
And the person doesn't have to go back to that. They just sign the PLA
Right.
For that agreement. And I think it's kind of cool that they, they use some of their workforce, but they get the opportunity to draw from the union hall.
Exactly.
Because that, that really enhances what they haven't been able to get, that, at that point.
And is there any discipline at all that would be working on the job that does not have to sign the PLA?
Not, uh, for the basic trades, they would all have to sign.
Okay.
That, that's, that's one of the functions
That part of the G.
Of the PLA that makes the whole project work very smoothly.
Right.
You know, is that we're all working under the same rules.
I think there are some exclusions, which are, you know, some management positions.
True.
Things that are built offsite, brought on, uh, the offsite construction does not have, is excluded.
The onsite construction.
But onsite, uh, town forces, if anything done by the owner, us.
Okay.
Um, you know, is not, uh, we're excluded from that. That was one of the exclusions.
Public utilities are excluded.
Public utilities.
And it's all still prevailing wage, correct?
Yes.
That doesn't have any effect on that?
Yes, that's a key factor. That's a good point that we did bring up.
And the union wages in Connecticut are the prevailing wages. So, the wages are the same.
So, there's no benefit by doing it non-union, because they got to pay prevailing wage anyway.
Right, right.
This, this is, without overdramatizing, this is a very, um, complicated, challenging job. It's occupied. There's kids in there. And, you know, with all due respect to the curriculum, the most important thing is the safety of the kids, having them have an opportu-, making the construction a kind of separate curriculum, so they'll learn about it, but they won't be near the workers, and making sure that it's sequenced crackerjack, one thing after another, because the stoppage is what will cause, you know, the, the job to go over budget. So, it's got to move swiftly. And in our experience, jobs of this size, of this mechanical, electrical challenge, you've got the remediation, frankly, you've got the, um, mechanical work, and you've got the site work. Those are three challenging parts of this particular job, on every job, but on this job. You want it, you want to ma-, enhance your chances for having the best performers, that, and the best performers have the immediate access to the trained workers who have done projects of this size before. I mean, everybody's got skin in the game here, but I, I feel, of course, I feel like I have the most skin in the game, because I've got to deliver this job to you guys on time and within budget, and you just make it so much easier for me if it's a PLA. I mean, I just, we'll be frank.
Is there, is there any discipline currently? I know, uh, Superintendent, you had some work done now, right? Correct? There's some ongoing work. Does that affect anybody that's, um, already working on the job? We've had some remediation work done.
We've had to do some work relative to, uh, the remediation.
Right. So, like that discipline?
But that's, that's before, uh, it's related
The job started.
But it's before we actually entered into the construction phase.
So, and they'll either be gone by the time that this needs to be signed?
They are gone now.
They are gone, okay.
They are gone now.
Okay.
But we have remediation that will be coming up in the project, so that's
And they would be under this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions, or? Uh, anyone else like to address the board? Yeah.
Of course.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, First Selectmen Cosgrove, Selectmen Higgins and Hearn, thank you for your, for your time tonight. My name is Chris Frixel. I'm the president of the Associated Builders and Contractors of Connecticut. Uh, we were just referenced a minute ago. Uh, I'm here to urge you to reject the PLA. Um, our organization, our association represents over two hundred member companies, open shop contractors, subcontractors. Um, I can tell you that, uh, open shop contractors don't bid, don't want to bid project labor agreements. Um, and that is because of some of the stipulations in those agreements. Uh, I, you know, Ms. Fusco used the, the word, the opportunity to, uh, hire from union halls. In fact, it's a requirement to hire from union halls. Uh, that would allow them to, uh, you know, contractors, non-union contractors, to bring in twenty-five percent of their workforce, and then hire from the bench. Um, our member companies, you know, a lot of them are family-owned companies. Um, Mr. Cosgrove, you understand that. Uh, these, these contractors have employees that they care very much about, and they want to use their own employees who they know and trust, uh, to work on their jobs. They also don't want to abide by union work rules. Um, uh, you know, I, I take a, a little bit of, uh, offense to the suggestion that non-union, uh, labor is not skilled. Uh, I very much disagree with that. Uh, in fact, ABC helped to found a construction education center. We do apprenticeship training as well. Um, our members are very much skilled, uh, laborers. Uh, we don't abide by the union work rules, which are, uh, you know, non-union laborers are multi-skill employees, so they don't stick to, uh, to one skill. They're able to learn multiple skills, which make them more effective. Uh, the non-union, uh, the construction industry in this state, eighty-plus percent is non-union. Uh, that's a big number. So, when you talk about, um, you know, getting the, the proper amount of labor, uh, you know, you don't want to cut out eighty-plus percent of, of that pool. Uh, additionally, you're going to limit the amount of contractors that are bidding on this job, if you go PLA, which is going to increase costs. I won't cite, uh, studies, uh, as they've been called into question. However, I'll say that it just makes sense that if you're limiting competition, you're going to face higher costs. I'll direct your attention to the city of Stanford, which just last year went out to bid with a PLA on the Strawberry Hill School. Uh, they got two bids back on that work, which was, again, it was a PLA, sixteen-plus million dollars over budget. They pulled the PLA back and went back out to bid without a PLA. Um, First Selectmen Cosgrove, you mentioned that there's no guarantee that you're going to prevent problems on a job. Uh, I feel as though, you know, one of the biggest reasons supporters of the PLA give is that it will maintain the schedule, budget, et cetera. That's not necessarily the case. Uh, many jobs, including school jobs, including jobs of this size, are done without PLA. They're done successfully. Uh, there are certainly PLA jobs that are done successfully. Um, there are PLA jobs that are not done successfully. The point being that it's not going to guarantee that the project is done on time, on budget, et cetera. Um, I would just urge you not to cut out, uh, not to discriminate against companies based on union affiliation. I certainly am not going to sit up here and tell you that the union workforce is not capable of doing it. I think that they are. Uh, I would just say that we would want the ability to bid fairly on this project.
Chris, Board of Selectmen, I appreciate the
I'm actually a resident of Rocky Hill, but I'll get into why I'm affiliated with this project to some extent. I am against the use of a PLA on this project. I know that they said that, you know, it is legal by state statute, but there is a lot of crafty language, and quite frankly, when you look at the bids on PLAs, non-union companies do not bid PLAs. The proof is in the pudding. They simply do not bid it. You know, I'm sitting here before you, and I wear multiple hats. First off, I am a taxpayer of the state of Connecticut. The use of the taxpayer dollars on this for state reimbursement, so I have a vested interest in how this project comes in, you know, either over budget or under budget, and I wish you guys luck with that. Secondly, I am the vice president of Cronenberger &amp; Sons Restoration. We have successfully completed the Blackstone Library exterior restoration, about a million-dollar project for the town of Branford about 10 years ago. And if this project goes PLA, I will not bid it. We do general trades packages for schools. This project here, we will not bid if it goes PLA. Third, is I'm also the chair of the Associated Builders and Contractors Board of Directors. And, you know, like Chris was saying, we have 200-plus members. We're not representing the guys in the pickup trucks with a ladder on the back that drive around and work unsafely. Our members are trained, they're licensed, you know, it's not just 200 contractors. There are a lot more contractors in the state of Connecticut that are not a part of our association, but they are more than competent. Many of our companies that make up our association are 100-plus million-dollar contractors. So we're not talking, you know, Home Builders Association-type people here, so they're trained, they're licensed, and they are professional. And fourth, I am the former, in a past life, I was a former estimator for a union contractor. You know, so we were able to enjoy the fruits of project labor agreement bids. We were based out of the Bloomfield area. We bid a lot of Hartford public school projects, worked in Waterbury as well. On one project, for instance, I knew I was the only bidder. We threw an extra couple hundred thousand dollars on the project. It's very obvious, limited competition means higher prices. It's very straightforward. I'm out there every day bidding projects, schools and whatnot, and I could be one of 10, 12 contractors bidding on the project. If I'm the only one, one of two or three, I'm putting more money on the job and making sure that I'm fully covered. And last but not least, the other hat I wear is I'm also the chair of the Building Committee for the Rocky Hill High School project, which is just wrapping up, just wrapped up this past September. And that was a $50 million project. It was a very complicated, multi-phase, multi-year renovation project. Crunch time was during the summer. They went like gangbusters, the baitment, and all trades in there. Our project was completed under budget, was completed on time. So, you know, it's, you know, they can't guarantee that. You know, the big thing about project labor agreements is they don't guarantee that they're going to be under budget. They don't guarantee that they're going to be safe. They don't guarantee that, you know, you're going to have the highest quality. They don't guarantee that they're going to finish on time. I don't see that, I don't think that language is in there on those PLAs. And so we just wrapped up that project. We also, in Rocky Hill, we're also building a brand-new $48 million intermediate school, which we're going to be bidding about the same time as your project. So that project there, there's some new requirements involved in the state in the past two years. The Commission of Human Rights and Opportunities, also known as CHRO, puts an added layer of burden on your construction projects that have state funding. So 25% of your project has to be subcontracted out to small businesses. 6.25% needs to be subcontracted out to minorities and woman-owned businesses. I was just on the DAS website earlier today. There are 2,500 DAS-certified contractors, small businesses. Only 214 of them are union, so that's less than 10%. So, you know, for something that the state is requiring that you have to do for you to limit competition to those that are union, again, non-union can bid on the project, they quite simply don't. It's been proven in the past, it doesn't happen, and we won't bid it. There are a lot of reasons, and we won't get into them. I also searched, 29 of those 2,500 DAS-certified businesses are located here in Branford. Only three of them are union. So if project labor agreements were the greatest thing since sliced bread, why isn't it done on every single project in the state of Connecticut? You know, you only see it underdeveloped inner cities. You see it in Hartford, you see them in New Haven, you see them in Bridgeport, you see them in New London, okay? You see them at Yale, they got lots of money. You know, the reason why it's done in inner cities is because they have a 90 to 95% state reimbursement on the project, so they really don't have a concern for cost, okay? University of Connecticut has done billions of dollars of work over the years. 99.5% of that has gone non-union. They build 100-million-dollar projects up there at the University of Connecticut, open shop, non-PLA, okay? So basically, you know, by putting a PLA on this project, you're going to proclude a lot of contractors, qualified contractors, from bidding on this project. They're not going to. You've got contractors like Control there, Pat Munger, and A-Second Dino here, located in Branford. They're not union-affiliated, and they won't bid on the project. Second, Dino was on our high school project, and they did a great job for us. So that's basically what I just wanted to add. You know, actually, the gentleman mentioned the whole symphony of how a PLA works, and which is brought to mind, as well, I guess I want to kind of put this in common terms so that people can understand how project labor agreement works, because I've been on them. Let's say you're at home and you need to replace your door at your house, okay? You grab the door, you throw it out, you jump in your truck, you go to Home Depot, get the door, you bring it home, you paint the door, you throw it up, okay? Project labor agreement, you know, the laborers have to remove the door, okay? They bring it to the truck. You have to be a trucker, you have to be in the truckers' union to drive the truck to get to Home Depot, okay? Then you have to be a laborer to move the material onto the truck. So there's other steps involved with a project labor agreement. So you come back with, you come back with the door, then you've got to take a 15-minute break, because that's what's required. Then you, the laborer has to carry that door into your house, the painter has to come and paint that door. Then, now that it's a door that's painted and finished, then the carpenter comes, the carpenter's the one that hangs the door and puts the hardware on it. So there's, it is a symphony, but it's also kind of a little bit of a step and added process in my terms, and I look at that on a grander scale of how things, and I've seen it out there on job sites. So I just wanted to throw that out there so you understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Appreciate you guys.
Yeah, I just, I would like to add, as far, a comment, other towns that have had PLA. I did reach out to a community similar to one of my colleagues, who is a chief elected official of a community similar to Branford, and asked his opinion. And again, Branford is a, currently, we're undertaking a number of projects, and I think every project needs to be looked at a little bit differently. And I did ask with the recommendation of if he would do another PLA for the school project that he just finished, and, you know, his response was like, absolutely. And he has other projects going, you know, it's not always the right fit. We're doing a community center project now, as we all know. You know, that had a certain delivery method that we followed. I think every project, you mentioned Blackstone Library, which is another renovation potentially going to be happening soon. Again, that would be, I would anticipate, you know, another way of delivering that project. You know, I think when we talk about the different trades, and perhaps somebody will just address this from the building trade, or actually Fusco, this is a CM at risk, these are bid out, all separate packages. So we use the example that, you know, one individual can't do multiple trades, it's actually bid out, am I correct, to Fusco? Electricians have one package, plumbers, painters, general trades. So that's in itself the structure of what we chose here to do a CM at risk. Those packages are bid out separately anyway, and then they're compiled for the, and CM, Fusco then manages those '20, '22, whatever it may be, packages. Correct?
Yes.
If there's any other questions, or if anyone else has any comments? Sure.
Yes, Selectmen Cosgrove, Selectmen Higgins, Selectmen of Hearn. My name is Tom Brockett. I am a resident of the town of Branford, a taxpayer of the town of Branford, and I live right next to the Walsh Intermediate School. Excuse me. I am also a representative from the 7th District Omni RGM. I am in support of a project labor agreement. In my view, the town of Branford has selected the finest construction manager in the state of Connecticut, the Fusco Corporation, to do this job. In addition, if you want the finest labor in the state of Connecticut, you will hire the New Haven Building Trades through a PLA to perform the work on this project. There are Branford contractors in this room who I have had the opportunity to work for for over 25 years in my business prior to I retired, and they are Massey's class, Mr. Massey is here, and they are Enterprise Plumbing and Heating, which is a large mechanical contractor who lives in Branford, and his office is in New Haven. So I am in full support of the Board of Selectmen voting in favor of a PLA for this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom.
Anyone else would like to? Yes, sir.
My name is Pete Alfery. I'm the business representative for the Plumbers and Plumbers Union, Local 777. Just want to make a clarification on the Rocky Hill High School. Local 777 was called in to Rocky Hill High School by ONG Corporation because the mechanical contractor fell on its face. I know we had to help Fusco Corporation on another project in the city of New Haven because the mechanical contractor fell on its face. If you have that kind of a schedule to meet, let's not have that happen here. We're trying to give you an opportunity to do it right. We're willing to work with you. We want to make this right for your town, and we want to make it right for your residents, and our contract isn't, and it's good for the whole project. Certain projects can be non-union. Yes, we understand that. When you have a tight schedule, it shouldn't be. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Just one other thing I'd like to add, because I think this is, comments being made, a gentleman from ABC referenced a few local contractors that are, non-union contractors that are here in town, and I have some personal work experience with those contractors, as well as, currently, one of them is, actually, they've also worked with us on multiple town projects, and they are qualified contractors and have done a great job. So again, I just want to put that, it's not to exclude anyone, I just think that every project, and we've talked about this on this board, when taking on different projects, each project has to be looked at differently in what the delivery method and how we staff those, the workforce on those jobs. Any other comments?
I just have one, Jim. Kind of based on what you just said, this particular building was built non-PLA and with construction management. And we, in fact, had to throw some contractors out, so to speak, because our construction manager at the time didn't feel that those particular contractors could do the job, even though they were the low bid or the mid bid, whatever the case may be. I believe the Building Committee has approved this through their process, and, you know, my feeling with the timeline is that this is an extremely important part of this project, and I'll be in favor of it.
Just to be clear, the building, Katie, we had a discussion, just if any questions to be brought up, and the chairman is here as well. But as I said at the beginning, it's really the responsibility, as the board that oversees the contracting, for us to approve this or consider this matter. So one other thing, I think it's been, because the budget came up a number of times, and I just think it'd be wise to mention that I did have a discussion with Fusco. They've been reviewing the budget at different stages. The question was asked whether a PLA would impact this budget that we have set. It was their recommendation or opinion that it would not, after reviewing it through their chief estimator and the department. That's correct, Lynn?
Yes.
All right. So...
With that, I will put in a form of a motion that we approve the project labor agreement for the Walsh Intermediate School renovation and expansion project.
You said that all in one project?
I did.
Before we do that, I just want to ask this gentleman, never met you before. I'm quite interested in all of the associations, groups, unions, no unions. What do you do in your spare time?
I'm a father.
Okay. Just trying to throw a little levity, I want to get a little smile on everybody's face. For one person of the board, I speak for myself right now. I came from New York, probably know where that is, right? And I worked on two of the committees that reconstructed the World Trade Center, not as an engineer, not as a painter, not as non-union, just as a management position to give input and thought. So why I say it is because I know what we went through down there, and it wasn't a cup of coffee. It was tough going, and you've got to be committed, because once we commit ourselves to the people of this town, there's no going back. We're going full speed ahead. So let's go full speed ahead with a clear road in front of us. It's my personal recommendation. If we're running into problems, let's not sit on them, let's bring them to light, let's make adjustments, deletions, petitions, whatever it's going to take. And I agree, and I vote yes.
Take a second? All right, so here, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Can I oppose? Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Item two, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
You're on the roll tonight, Jack.
All in favor, I say aye. Aye?
The preceding program was brought to you through the support of the town of Branford. Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.